Okay. I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. Can we have roll call, please?
Mayor Protam Wall.
Here.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Attending remotely via teleconference.
And Councilmember Woodard.
Attending remotely via teleconference.
That concludes roll call.
Thank you. And so next is the city managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protam, members of council. Just a few things to mention tonight. I did want to highlight, we didn't last time, although I should have, but the National Day of Service at Lake Ballinger on Saturday, the 14th. We had 20, a little over 20 volunteers, and they did a great, great job down there with the tools that we had available in getting everything cleaned up, ready for the winter season, unfortunately, but getting everything cleaned up. And so that was a great event, and I did want to mention that publicly. Also, last Saturday, we had our very first welcoming week, and that went very well in partnership with the Edmond School District. We had, I believe, 25 vendors and somewhere, I think it was between 70 and 100 participants that attended, so that was great to see. Looking forward to making that an annual event. And did also want to mention the art show is going on this week, and it closes on the 28th. So you have two more days to get over there and see it. I went over there today, and there's some, there's some great stuff in there. I really liked the photography exhibit. There was a lot of, a lot of really nice stuff there. On October 5th, the Foundation for Edmond School District is hosting their 5K and Fall Festival at Lake Ballinger, so if you're able to attend that. And just a quick update on the HR manager and communications and community engagement manager recruitments. We have an incredibly strong applicant pool, which I'm very thankful for, and will be conducting initial screening interviews for those positions next week. And that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions or comments? Okay. I don't see anyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so next is the review of the Department of Ecology grant agreement with our stormwater program manager, Laura Reed. Did I miss a public comment?
Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you about a grant that Ecology has awarded to the city for the purpose of building, a purpose of design and engineering plans for a water quality treatment plant, project in the city of Mount Lake Terrace, 70th Street at 220th. I'm very excited about this project. I'm really excited to talk to you about it. This is a couple of little maps that explain both the current condition and the desired future condition. This, just to orient you into this little maplet, this is I-5 here on the right-hand side, and then on this side is Highway 99. This is 220th. All these light purple and dark purple lines are stormwater connections. And the thing that I've circled here in red is how, is where the stormwater, any rain that flows off of 220th Street goes directly into Hall Creek, picking up and including all the pollutants that are shed by cars along 220th, which is, as you know, the biggest arterial in the city, has about 30,000 cars a day going down it. This then feeds through Hall Creek into Lake Ballinger, which of course is our swimming, fishing, boating, recreation resource. What this grant will pay for is the design and engineering to collect all the water in this lower diagram here that falls in 3.42 acre basin and route it from the existing stormwater infrastructure into a vault filled with a media, which will then filter and remove pollutants and then using existing infrastructure, return it to Hall Creek. And just a few things about the grant. We're estimating that it's going to take about 15 months to complete. It requires a 15% match, which we can satisfy using city staff time to both review the project and to manage the project. The work will be done by Jacobs Engineering Consultants. City staff will review it. And one of the good things about this project is that not only will it fulfill one of the new 2024 Ecology permit requirements, which is to treat 3.5 acres of, of the city, this permit cycle, this project is big enough, it'll cover our requirements to treat all the way through the next permit cycle to 2036. Essentially, what we will produce is an Ecology-approved plan set that puts the city in an excellent position to compete for a 75% construction grant from Ecology. We would apply in 2025 and start construction in '26. The construction estimate would be, is currently 1.3 million, but with the grant, the cost to the city would be $325,000. So if you'll indulge me for a few minutes, I would like to talk about my personal connection to this project. And I'd like to talk just a little bit about why Ecology funded this project. And to find out, we have to travel back 25 years to 1999.
It's not 25 years ago.
It is not 25 years ago.
No, it is.
It is.
It was just yesterday. Yes, okay, well, in, there you go. Yeah, everybody could think about what they were doing in 1999. Well, in 1999, what I was doing was, yeah, I was, I was working for Seattle Public Utilities. I was standing in Longfellow Creek because I was doing a spawning survey for, which was part of the work that I was doing to monitor four large creek restoration projects that were being done for the turn of the century. So we were trying to see if we could bring back the spawning runs into these highly degraded urban creeks. But as I was standing there in the creek, I'm looking at the salmon, and I can already see that something's very wrong. The salmon are freshly returned from the sea. They're perfectly bright and colorful looking, but what they're doing is they're circling, they're opening their mouths, they're flaring their gills, they're becoming disoriented, or disoriented, and within about 10 or 20 minutes, they're flopping over and dying. And I've seen that, I saw this over and over again. My friend and I were like, okay, this isn't right. We need to call NOAA because we're not fish biologists. We don't know what's going on. So that is what we did. Now, initially, NOAA didn't believe us, and they didn't think that we were, really knew what we were talking about because we weren't fish biologists. But once we persuaded them to come out there after a large storm, and they saw 30 to 40 salmon, which had died before they had spawned and were full of eggs, they got very interested. So, because at this time, it was thought that the primary impact of stormwater to aquatic biota was physical. It was the flow, it was the scour, it was the turbulence and turbidity in the water. It wasn't thought that it was really a chemical problem. So what, we were trying to figure it out, like, is it disease? Is it petroleum? Is it heavy metals from brake pads? Is it because these fish are hatchery strays? Is it a combination of different things? This is a picture of me in 99 or 20, or 2000. What I'm holding there is a very dead, very old Coho salmon that I'm about to deliver to NOAA for them to dissect, because that was part of my job back then. Right, yeah, the gluten cocktail, yeah. Okay, so it took a long time to figure this out. I mean, I worked on this for about, pretty intensively, for about 10 years. I put together graphs showing rainfall, flow, successful and unsuccessful spawning. I helped NOAA build a outdoor lab in Longfellow Creek so we could test the effect of treated versus untreated water on juvenile salmon. We did a lot of fish autopsies. I helped set up a water quality treatment, a water quality monitoring system that would actually collect a little bit of water along, through an entire storm cycle so that we could try to figure out if it was a pollutant. But in the end, what really was the most effective was the mapping work that NOAA did to, to look at the connection between traffic density and fish mortality. That turned out to be the most fruitful path to try to figure out what was, what was going on. And in 2020, they actually figured out what it was. There's a tire additive that's an antioxidant, prevents tires from breaking down in sunlight. This particular material called 6PPD also breaks down into another compound called 6PPDQ. These are both very, very toxic to aquatic life at small doses. Now, we're starting to look at what the impact might be to human health. And so now, in 2024, the exciting thing for me is that we're actually going to be designing a facility that's designed to remove 6PPD and 6PPDQ. And we're going to be doing it as the science is really developing to determine what is the best kind of media to put into this vault to remove it most effectively. And this is now a worldwide kind of question, is how can we treat this? How can we remove this from tires to make sure that we don't have to deal with this in the future? But that's why Ecology was really interested in funding this. This is the conceptual design. It shows here where we're going to cut away the original connection and then route the flow to this vault, which will be entirely within the road prism. It's going to be basically a box filled with media. But I wanted to stress to you that the success of this project is really based on the fact that it needs to be low maintenance, low maintenance cost. So it's not going to be something that's going to be a real albatross around the neck of the crews, and I've talked to them about it. They will be involved in this. I don't think it's going to be something that they have to worry about too much, but I think it will be very effective. So the quest is to authorize the city manager to accept this grant from Ecology. And this can be accomplished as part of the consent agenda. There's also a resolution that needs to be signed to accept the grant. Any questions?
Are there any questions?
Did you like it?
I did, but it was not 25 years ago.
Councilmember Sonmore, are you trying to get on?
Sorry, I'm just trying to fix my screen here. Laura, I just wanted to say thank you, and thank you for your 1999 Prince Would Be Proud story. I remember as a young kid going fishing with my dad and seeing the fish after they spawned, and it just brought back some childhood memories that a lot of people don't get anymore is because a lot of our fish are dying, and I know it even goes beyond, you know, the antifreeze and all different things that are polluting our lakes. But I'm very proud of you. I'm very proud of what this will entail, and I'm hoping that maybe we could find some other places in the city or encourage other places to do this as well. And I think, didn't the fish ladder or the fish window close today? So it's all about perfect timing, but I just wanted to say thank you for bringing back some wonderful memories and also your knowledge for helping get this grant for us. And a 15% grant is pretty good, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Laura, I'm, I'll just pile on the good vibes and say it's, it's really great to see this sort of continuity in your career in, you know, treating these, these persistent sort of systemic problems with our, our, our infrastructure and our impacts that we have on, on water quality and the degree to which salmon can or can't survive in our, in their habitats as they exist now. So this, this seems like a terrific opportunity, and I hope, it seems like, you know, this is, the intent of Ecology is, this seems sort of like an early sort of model that could be emulated. Is that correct? Do these, these sorts of facilities exist elsewhere?
No.
Or is this sort of first, a sort of prototype of sorts?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a really good point, which is, actually, I think this is one of the very first, would be one of the very first, and I have received quite a few questions and interest from WDFW, from Susan Del Benny's office, City of Marysville, City of Bothell. People want to know, you know, what's the special sauce? What's the, what's the media? Of course, we can't answer that question because we're only at the start of our, this project, this process, but I believe that it will be very useful to future projects to see how this, how this one goes.
Cool. And then, you know, I have the pleasure of sitting or representing the city with, along with you on the Y8 board, is just thinking about that panel or other opportunities. I know that there will be probably more media interest about this because 6PPD and, 6PPD are definitely on the tongues of lots of policymakers and certainly at the, at the state legislature. I hear it this year a lot. I suspect we'll, we'll see a lot of focus on that, but, you know, have you been asked to present any, any other places, or is, do you think that we'll get more attention for this project as, as we get closer?
I have been, yeah.
Or get closer to fruition here?
Yeah, I have been asked to present to the 6PPD Work Group from, from Ecology. It's a regional thing, but I told them that it would be more useful and interesting if I was able to talk to them in six months when we're, you know, I have more to share. Yeah, sure.
Anyone else? Mayor Protam Wall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Laura, the word I would use here is monumental. I mean, this is, you should be so proud of yourself for taking those first steps in the first place, and we are so proud of you for being part of our team. And, I mean, there's so many areas, I mean, whether it's the trees or stormwater runoff and everything that you've been doing for us. The critical area, what was, where you first started, where we had, anyway, it was, you've, you've been marvelous, and thank you. This is great. I'm really excited about this. I won't go on because there's no need to, other than to say thank you. This is amazing, really excited about the prospects and how we can be a leader in the state and the country and the world, it almost sounds like, in identifying the challenge and finding solutions to help address the challenge. And, you know, salmon has been a huge issue for this area for decades, and finding solutions that, that will help is fantastic, so thank you.
Thank you for your kind words. Appreciate it.
I see Councilmember Woodard up there.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I mean, just piling it on as well, but sincerely as well, just to say thank you so much, you know, just when you think someone couldn't be any more cool to go worldwide on you and bring your city along with us, right? So I just appreciate it.
I really can't take credit.
Oh, no, you can't hear me? Oh, it's horrible.
No, I can, I can hear you.
No, we can hear you.
I totally thought you can't hear me. Gotcha. So anyway, yeah, just wanted to say thank you so much and congratulations. And again, just this idea that, once again, Mount Lake Terrace, you know, four square miles, but what an impact it has, and it has that because of not just the staff and the residents, but because of that collective energy. And I also wanted to point out, you know, this seems fitting, that while most of the world was thinking about Y2K, you were walking a stream, thinking about the real world. And here we are, some 25 years later, about the really benefit. So just again, kudos to you, and just keep up the great work.
Well, thank you very much. I also feel that this point, I should really make clear that there's a lot of people that worked on this project, and a lot of people did a heck of a lot more than I did. WSU, NOAA, researchers across the, across the country and even other countries. I had a very small piece of this, but it is really exciting to see it come to fruition, you know, over the course of my career.
Irrelevant.
Well, our executive, Dave Summers, is a marine biologist. Has he, has he called yet?
Not yet. No, I haven't heard from him.
Okay. Well, anyone else? I don't see... Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Okay, next is the review, review of McKinstry Agreement for Police Department Building Improvements with our Parks and Recs, Recreation and Parks Director, Jeff Betts.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protam and councilmembers. Let me just start to say that I like fish, too. This project does not involve salmon, but we'll do our best to interweave salmon into this presentation. So tonight's purpose is to review an agreement with McKinstry to replace the heating, cooling, and roof for the police department. So very exciting also. The building was constructed, what's that? Okay, I'm sorry. The building was constructed originally in 1991 and houses the Command and Operations divisions, which include patrol, domestic violence, animal control records, and evidence, amongst others. The facility was further expanded in 2021 with a new training room and holding cell and, and other amenities. The newer areas of the facility were outfitted with a new roof and heating and cooling units. However, the original facility's heating and cooling has failed. And actually, the heating units failed a couple of years ago. We installed temporary heating in, I believe, 2022, and the cooling unit, the last compressor, went out last year. So we had temporary cooling in that facility as well this past summer, and it did not do the best job. From everything I hear from people, it worked hard, and it probably consumed a lot of energy and did its best to cool the building, but it's just not the same thing as having an actual rooftop unit do that kind of work. But in addition, the existing variable air volume units, we call them VAVs, and control systems for the facility are original and also in dire need of replacement, and are very expensive as well. And so those units are no longer on eBay where we've been sourcing them, so cannot find them anymore. But in anticipation of this, as we've known that these units were out, doing a lot of thought and research on how to make this happen, but luckily enough, we were able to connect with McKinstry to the help of the deputy city manager. And so McKinstry, we contracted with them August of 2023 to analyze facility needs for energy savings as well as any cost estimates for major repairs. Amongst some of the major findings were, not only we already knew that the heating and cooling weren't working, but that was the obvious one, but the roof needed a replacement and had major failings in multiple locations. And this was also on staff's radar, but just the urgency to replace it was not at that level, so that, that did increase after the study. And we did find out some additional things from the study that insulation would be required, which we did not know that. It's updated building code, so we would need to re-insulate the entire roof as well as add a parapet wall to hide that new rooftop unit, because the current one does not completely hide it, according to our code. So simultaneously, we did contract McKinstry to dig deeper into police instead of the overarching study, and they pulled up a study that would take a look into the rough order of magnitude for the replacement of those elements. And the cost for the project came out to be, it's associated with this contract directly, That includes $412,000 for the roof, $476,000 for the rooftop unit, and then various other costs as well for design, construction management, administration, taxes, bonds, and there's also a contingency amount of almost $54,000 included. And the draft timeline for that project has been received by the city recently that we are working on, but it, it has been updated. It shows work to begin soon after the contract has been signed, and then equipment would need to be ordered because there are extremely long lead times for rooftop units, air conditioning. And the roof work, as we know, cannot happen in the winter, so it would not occur until spring, and actually, probably more into the summer that construction would actually begin. And so we anticipate completing construction and closing out the contract by the end of So that is the end of my presentation. Staff would recommend that at the next full council meeting, October 3rd, that the council vote on and authorize that city manager to sign that attached agreement between the city and McKinstry, and that would be upon final city attorney approval as to form. It can also be accomplished as part of the consent calendar. Are there any questions?
Councilmember Sonmore.
Jeff, can you just go over possible cost overruns if it's not going to be done until 2025? You know, we, we went through that with City Hall and a few other items. Is the price going to be what it's going to be, or since it's going to take about another year, can we look at cost increases, or can we do it at the $1,436 and a little change there? Or is it going to go up?
No.
This just still blows me away of the price of the roof.
Absolutely. So this is a guaranteed maximum cost, so the contract should not increase, so this should be the final cost. You know, obviously barring something that happens with the design or construction and that a change order would need to be, you know, executed if, if there was something that's unforeseen. But as far as we know, this, this is what the agreed-upon price would be, and it's the guaranteed maximum.
I don't see any other hands, but I did have a question. So does that mean that the police department is going to, they're going to have to use space heaters again this winter?
Yes.
Oh, dear.
And that does a better job than the air conditioning was doing, I think, but there still are, are areas that aren't heated very well, so it, it probably will be a struggle in the colder times.
Okay, well, at least it'll be there last winter.
Yes.
All right. Anyone else? Councilmember Murray?
I just wanted to say thank you, Jeff. And you have a very nice water bottle, reusable water bottle that says "Plant Trees" on it. That's very awesome, so I appreciate the very thoughtful and thorough presentation.
Thank you.
We're proud of you, too.
All right, I don't see any other hands going up, so this is going to be on, oh.
October 3rd.
Yes, October 3rd.
Okay, then, you have the next one. Presentation of the, presentation on the utility box art.
So again, thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protam and councilmembers. This agenda item is to review some art-wrapped signal boxes. So the Arts Advisory Commission has recommended installation of some themed art wraps at two different signal box locations with the city, and each location has two boxes that would receive a wrap, so there's actually four total wraps. And I will just review those designs and make sure that it's everything that you hoped and dreamed of for those locations. So we first talk about the background and some project goals and the locations, cost timeline, and also some questions and discussion. So this actually originated from the Arts Advisory Commission, where they expressed interest in creating some of the art-wrapped signal boxes, actually creating art wraps for some of the signal boxes within the city. And it was really to utilize some of the funds that were allocated to art projects. And if you go into a lot of the neighboring cities around Mount Lake Terrace, or even outside that, you will see a lot of them, and... and some really neat designs that different cities have utilized. So they really are a blank canvas. And it's, I think it's a very neat way to decorate around the city and to add art. And that's where it originated. So staff acquired estimates from the graphic designer, a graphic designer, and also some printing comparisons. We checked out a couple different companies. And the Arts Advisor Commission did make a recommendation to proceed with two project locations and a couple of themes. So those two locations, and there are many others to choose from, these were just two that they recommended that thought were good candidates. It was 44th Avenue West and Hawkway, which is right at Mount Lake Terrace High School, and they utilize a Mount Lake Terrace High School theme. And then also 56th Avenue and 236th Street Southwest and using a cityscape theme. So the project goals were to really get some visual interest in arts and to be able to spread that around the city to some blank canvas locations. And additionally was to council goals to grow our vibrant community. And then there's also two Arts Advisory Commission goals that relate, including collaborating with artists and businesses as well as creating opportunities for artists. So location A, as I mentioned, is 44th Avenue West and Hawkway. And if you hear in the presentation, there's a, on the left, there's a before picture. And then there's the, kind of the actual conceptual, the conceptual image for what it would look like once it's wrapped. And you could see the design. And I'll give you the next slide, kind of a little closer look at that wrap design. And so it is the Hawk and the Mount Lake Terrace High School logo with Go Hawks on it. And location B is 56th Avenue West and 236th Street Southwest, and it's more of a cityscape theme. And it'd wrap both boxes as well, this location. And don't mind the weed right there. It's been pulled since then. But and the tree is not growing out of the top of the box. It's really an odd kind of location for the photo. The tree is on the other side of the street. But very high visibility area for our wraps. And here's kind of a close-up look at the art itself. So just a couple of the estimated costs and the contractors that we discussed and got estimates from was Tricia Jarris, a graphic designer, then as well as Bass Lines doing the printing and installation. So that's for all four wraps, both sites. It's about $7,670. So the timeline in June, the commission discussed these themes of this year. In July, at the Arts Advisor Commission meeting, themes and location ideas were then sent to the graphic design printer. And then in August, those renderings were recommended by the commission. And here we are in September with the council briefing. And then the goal would be to, soon after, start printing and installation, October, November. Are there any questions?
Okay. Are there any questions, comments? Mayor Pro Tem Wall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I love this. This is fantastic. You know, one of the things that we talk about placemaking and the need to incorporate more public art into the city landscape. And this is a great start. I look forward to having us do more of these as well as additional public art throughout the community. But this is, again, a great start. I look forward to identifying other opportunities, other locations, other utility boxes that we can do. My one suggestion is on the cityscape one. I like, I like the art. I'd love to incorporate, though, the Town Center logo. We talk about branding. It's going to be an important part of what we're going to be doing. But down at the bottom, maybe incorporating it, and just like we have on the planners, the Town Center logo and then Town Center, maybe putting something...
That logo right there.
Yeah, exactly. Right there. Just incorporate the Town Center and the logo and get that branding going. So that's, that's my only suggestion. Although I just love it. Look forward to doing more of it. Thanks.
Yeah, I think that'd be an easy change to make.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Jeff. Yeah, I would echo everything that Mayor Pro Tem Wall said. And I did have one question. In terms of kind of longevity, do we have an idea of how long these wraps will last once they're installed?
I can't say that I do. I mean, this is our first experience with them. We could potentially check into other cities. I think they're, they're pretty resilient. They're supposed to be, and I've seen some in like Seattle areas, things like that, have been there for quite a few years now. I mean, I would assume it'd be there for at least 10 years.
So, yeah, I do have a little bit of experience with that. I've done these or I've participated in these and other communities and generally eight to 12.
Okay. No, that's great. So something, again, that we could add to over time. No, I love it. Super excited about it. Would love to see opportunities for maybe folks in our community to be able to contribute their artwork to future installations, but really excited to start the process. And big thank you to you and the Arts Commission for, for the work.
So councilmember Woodard, you had your hand up, but I don't see it up now.
Yeah, I didn't want to forget to lower it. Thank you, Mayor. Firstly, I'm going to say, great presentations, both of them. I did have a question on the last presentation, but I think you answered it by saying that they have to use the space heaters. Just wanted to make sure that we're already being very clear that we're going to support our police department through this process through the end of 2025, of course, with the big payoff being the new unit and all that. But just to make sure that that's budgeted for, or at least that we're already thinking about that, because we hit another summer, another summer before the end of 2025. Moving forward to this project, though, I too just wanted to echo what an awesome project to begin with. The execution of it looks amazing. I really like the cityscape one. In particular, the people of color, that you didn't hold back. Those look like Afros. Nice job, whoever that is. You know, that said, the Hawks one. I'm curious, if you're not already planning to do this, if there's an opportunity, especially with the Edmund School District and their defunding of the arts situation right now, calling it a situation. But nonetheless, I'm wondering if we can't show this is our, for lack of a better word, goodwill effort to kind of honor the arts, but just to coordinate with them when it's all said and done, either through the foundation of Edmund School District or the school district itself. They do meet together, so you could technically address them at one time. But just putting that out there. And then hopefully, presuming you all can hear me, the other piece I would like to put forward, if you don't already have this, is kind of if we could do them all, here's how much it would cost. If we could do half, this is how much we could cost. Not a perfunctory act. What I would eventually like to introduce, and maybe I have to wait till new business, but planting the seed here, is I suspect we'll again have another round of ARPA dollars that did not flush out the way we thought. And so if we could have this in place, I think this would be a wonderful mental health funding, if you will, just the arts in general. But just to think about, hey, this might be a small amount of money that comes back, but if we have a plan in place, you could move forward with it immediately. And maybe we get more of these than just the two. So a lot of words there. I'm not sure the protocol of getting this as an idea moving forward, but just want to put it out there now. But again, Jeff, the takeaway here is you didn't need salmon, brother. You got tough jobs, all of you. And everybody's stuff is amazing. But that said, I really like that Hawks. Go Hawks.
Yeah. And one thing I did forget to mention is we did engage with the school. We touched base with a couple of different instructors that actually talked to some of their students about the design. So there were a few different options that they talked to them about, and this was the most popular design. So we did do some of that, probably not as grand of a skill as I would like to actually engage people on, but it's just a start. So, you know, there's bigger program to be had, maybe.
All right. Councilmember Sonmore?
Thank you. All very great comments. I just have some then. They've already been asked, and so thank you for that. But I have some, since we're on the arts, I wanted to thank the Arts Commission, and they did a great job, especially Connor Ryan with the Art Show, too, and picking out the artists for this. So good job on that. So my next thing is to talk, are we talking to the Arts Commission about a creative district at all?
That's not something that staff has initiated lately. I know that was, been a council discussion in previous years.
So I'm hoping we can maybe bring that up just because there's grant funding out there, and maybe the Arts Commission can look into that a little bit. There's supposed to be certain funding, and if we are bringing some more art out there, which brings me to our next question, is our flowers. I noticed they're starting to peel on top. And I know there was a guarantee on that piece of art. And before it rusts anymore up on top, I'm hoping that we can seal it or do something. I don't know if the artist, what the plan was, if the artist has a certain guarantee on the piece of art. But I love it so much, I just don't want to see it get ruined with the cold weather coming on. And then my last question, and you guys will have to answer that right now, but my next question is, and I spoke too soon at the last meeting, I have not seen the budget. I thought I was told that the budget was shown at the last city talk or terrace talk or whatever we're calling it now. But I just want to make sure things like this in the future may not be on our plate with budgets getting so bad lately as maybe too is thinking about sponsorships for some of these. And it's not like I want to see advertisement on them, but maybe some sort of sponsorship. But I have to say, I really like art designs. I was in Everett not too long ago, and it almost looked like wrapping paper. And so I'm glad we have a little bit more flair. But I did like Brian's idea, too, about a logo on there. But in the future, it would be nice to be able to sponsor this. I know there's no more thing as budget dust anymore, but it was almost $8,000 for four signal signs. And I just want to bring it up because we may have some just tough decisions. And I know this was from 2022 budget, but I just want to put that out there, just thinking of ways to of paying for some in the future.
Okay. Anyone else? Mayor Pro Tem Wall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I actually just want to tag along to Councilmember Sonmore's comments, which would be probably more appropriate during the budget discussions or new business or something else. But along those lines, I think she's on to something. And something that I've been interested in and concerned about is the use of our public fund, the 1% for the arts unfunding and how we're utilizing that and how we might be able to better utilize it in, into public art in our community. I'd love to have a task force or some sort of a group to get together and start talking about developing a plan and then, and then incorporating in Councilmember Sonmore's ideas as far as sponsorships and grants and other ways that we can be able to attract additional funding beyond what we already have in a limited budget time and be able to make sure that we're making the most of incorporating more public art into, into our community. I really like, looking forward to making that a key topic for us to pursue next year and into the future to help us with our placemaking strategies. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? So I just want to mention that some of the, some of the wraps over in the International District, which is still in good condition, have you noticed? So I would imagine that that, that would have a lot of wear and tear in that area, but they're in pretty good condition. So. All right. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much. We're going to now go on to the second review of the draft comprehensive plan with our senior planner, Jonathan Morales. And I don't see Kristi, so just Jonathan. Or maybe Kristi's up there.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Matsumoto Wright, Mayor Pro Tem Wall, members of council. My name is Jonathan Morales, senior planner at the city of Mount Lake Terrace. And I'm joined with Mandy Roberts from OTAC and Kristi Osborne is on the line as well. So today's our second review of the draft comprehensive plan. Quick agenda overview. So we will go over the project status. We did want to bring forward agency of public comments, sort of a summary of those comments that we received from both agencies as well as members of the public. Then we wanted to introduce the recommended land use map as recommended by the Planning Commission. And then part two review of the elements. So we will focus on the land use, recreation parks and open space, transportation and capital facilities elements. And then we'll have time for some discussion or next, go over the next steps. So I'm happy to report that on Monday, September 23rd, we had a public hearing with the Planning Commission, and they forwarded a recommendation on the draft comprehensive plan as well as the draft proposed recommended land use map. So we are moving forward to council adoption on the scheduled date of October 16th. And so we have today's meeting, next meeting, October 3rd, and then a tentative meeting scheduled for October 10th. Right now, that's just a placeholder before we move to the adoption of public hearing on the 16th. So in terms of comments received, this is dating back to July until current. So from Landsberg Quality Homes, there was a letter sent to staff and it should be to Planning Commission and council regarding Dwayne Landsberg participation in the Conference of Plan Advisor Group. And then a comment on focusing opportunities created by the last con-plan amendment. So that would have been in 2019 for a revitalized Town Center. And then he offered his support for alternative three and higher densities. In terms of agencies, we received a letter from the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife. And these comments were related to the draft goals and policies and suggestions for policy language, especially the environment element as well as land use element. And they attached the best available science resources as well. I didn't include that in the packet because it was over four inch pages. Department of Natural Resources, Washington Geological Survey, sent an email with comments related to the environment element and credible areas, specifically geological hazards, with a suggestion to add references to geological hazardous areas in the plan as well as natural resource areas. Snohomish County Cameno Association of Realtors sent in a letter with comments suggesting for thoughtful implementation of environmental policies, especially how they relate to housing development and production. They had general support for alternative two, which you know is the preferred alternative that we're moving forward with. There's support for focusing housing and employment growth in mixed-use areas, balancing environmental protection with housing and responsible growth. Support for transit-oriented development, incentivizing new development. There was some caution expressed related to parking standards, aligning transit with housing, caution on requiring energy-efficient infrastructure due to the cost that it may have on a, perform a modeling development project. And then a community member provided a comment suggesting areas to allow for mixed use and prioritization of transportation infrastructure. And then suggestions to densities propose an alternative two and three specifically around this gentleman's neighborhood. And also in your packet today, you should have received a compiled packet of comments that we received with the draft EIS. So last meeting, we went over those comments. Other comments that we're tracking. So as part of the review process for the draft plan, we're required to submit our draft plans to the Department of Commerce for what's called a 60-day review. So we are anticipating that that letter will be sent to the city in early October. So we did meet with the Department of Commerce, and they share their preliminary comments. So we are working on responding to those comments and ensuring that their recommendations are incorporated in the draft plan. Puget Sound Regional Council, we received a comment letter today, actually, and we met with them today as well. And so their comments are more related to transportation element. And we were able to resolve some, some of their comments at the meeting. And as we move forward in this process, we'll make sure that we address their comments and recommendations. In terms of city council, we've been going through this process with the briefings as well as the formal draft plan review. And so we have received some preliminary comments from Mayor Pro Tem Wall. And so we have received some preliminary comments from Mayor Proton Wall. And so we are working on reviewing those and ensuring that we are addressing those comments as well as any comments that come forward throughout this process as we move forward. And then internal staff, community economic development, and public works, we have some minor edits that we would like to see addressed in the plan. And then just a quick note, I did distribute the August 16th draft to HASCO and the Chamber of Commerce to see if they had any further comments or suggestions. I have not heard back, but we'll make sure that if they do have comments, that they're reflected in the plan. All right, so before I dig in, any comments so far?
Didn't the master builder send something in?
Yes, master builder submitted a comment letter on the draft EIS. So yeah.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, are there any questions or comments? Okay. Did you want to go first?
No, not yet.
Oh, not yet. I don't see any, okay, we'll continue then.
Okay. So before I move forward with the draft land use map, I did want to preface by saying that as we worked on the draft EIS, we ultimately came to the decision to select the preferred alternative. And that was in line with the Planning Commission recommendation to go with preferred alternative two. So the land use map is based off of that alternative. So with the Planning Commission, we proposed a draft land use map on at their, sorry, at their August 26 meeting. There was quite some discussion and recommendations to incorporate. So we decided to bring forward at the September 9th meeting, two land use map options. So we call them option A and option B. And then based on that meeting and feedback, at the September 23rd meeting, which was the public hearing, we brought forward a draft land use map that was based on the recommendations. And at that meeting, they had just a minor tweak. So the land use map that I'm going to present for you is the recommendation from the Planning Commission. So side by side, I wanted to show a comparison, what is the existing comprehensive plan land use map versus what is the recommended land use map? As you can see on the left, there's quite a bit of urban low residential land use designations, which is currently what is our RS 4800 to RS 8400 zoning districts. And then what is on the right is four distinct residential land use designations, residential one through four. And those are what is our single family and implementing a middle housing designations. Some other changes, we removed the community business land use designation. And so that is reflected with the new neighborhood mixed use land use designation. Freeway tourist, which is the blue, became gateway mixed use. And what else? Light Industry and Office Park has become our employment land use designation. That does not mean that we're removing light industries, it's just speaking more to what is the intent there. And then in terms of nomenclature, so what we had mobile home park before that is now manufactured home park. And I think that is the gist of the of the changes. So a side by side comparison of alternative two in our draft EIS versus what the recommended land use map is. So it's more or less similar with the exception that we did expand some neighborhood mixed use land use designations as directed by the Planning Commission. And so what was like four to six mixed use, four to six story mixed use, three to four story middle housing, those have become the neighborhood mixed use land use designations and the residential one through four land use designations. So based on the Planning Commission recommendations of what we discussed, just wanted to highlight some of those changes. So what was previously residential mixed use, we decided to rename neighborhood mixed There was interest in expanding neighborhood mixed use density in Cascade View, so at the 212th Street Southwest and 44th Avenue West intersection, so this part here. St. Pius Church, what was urban medium residential, which is sort of a, it's a land use designation that allows for a multifamily development, that is now neighborhood mixed use. And there was interest to expand the neighborhood mixed use across that corridor, so 220th just adjacent to the I-5 off-ramp. So as you can see along that stretch of land there, it's neighborhood mixed use. We expanded some neighborhood mixed use at 228th and 44th, what is Cedar Plaza. And then areas south of 238th Street Southwest and west of 56th Avenue West is residential three. In your packets, you should have received a land use designation info sheet. It sort of explains what the intended purpose of each land use designation is and what the proposed unit densities would be. So any questions?
Oh, let's see. Councilmember Payne Donovan and then Sonmore.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Jonathan. And yeah, this is exciting. I'll just say that. But it does raise a few questions for me, just looking at the map and realize there's been a lot of process here already. But I think first I'll note that, you know, with with all of these new colors on the map, there's a lot of, I think it highlights some of our disparities in parks across the city and just thinking about what, you know, what growth we will see in the city. There's, you know, thinking about the texture of these neighborhoods and the folks that will be moving, especially in the, or potentially living in these new buildings that these colors represent. Looking at the northeast end of town, this is something we all know, but I think it's worth repeating here that those disparities are kind of driven home as we add the potential for new units and new homes. And then also, you know, as I look at sort of R1 and R2 areas, I think, you know, on the theme of, around the topic of parks, note that a lot of the, there aren't many areas with, especially in the center of town and around Candy Cane corridor there, there's not, you know, basically all R1 there. And so I guess I'll stop here and ask if there was any thinking about why, why not R2 near some of the parks or specifically there at Lions Creek Candy Cane Park?
Yeah, no, those are good questions. I would say that a lot of the density that we were proposing with the draft EIS was along those corridors, so where there is existing transportation access, whether through bus routes, adjacent to town center, light rail station. So a lot of those more higher densities are centered around those transit corridors as well as established commercial nodes or neighborhood commercial nodes. Did I answer your second question?
Yeah, you did. And the first first point was was only a comment. That makes sense and.
And I would say, yeah, in terms of anti-displacement, we are keeping a watchful eye of that. As you know, we did the RDI analysis, which looks at which key areas are at risk for displacement. In terms of income band analysis, so a lot of the housing that Commerce views as that 0% to 60% AMI, that would be represented in what could possibly be developed in those neighborhood mixed use areas to accommodate more lower income populations. And then we have middle housing, which is increasingly becoming, I guess, somewhat affordable option. We still need to do the market analysis and assure that that is the case for our city. But it's another housing type that is available where people who don't have access to the traditional single family market, that could be something that they can access.
Absolutely, thank you. And I really appreciate you being able to give that other analysis. I think it really speaks to the thoroughness of this process. So I'm just, I'm going to move through a couple other quick points and questions. And I think my next question sort of dovetails into this anti-displacement. Given the manufacturer, the new manufactured home designation or whatever, yeah, manufactured home park designation, does that change in naming beneficial to those residents anyway? Or what was the thought there?
I think to speak to that is more so just what the best practice is nowadays in terms of a mobile home versus manufactured home parks. I think a lot of jurisdictions and policy makers are using manufactured home parks.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, wasn't sure if there's any more policy depth there or not. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, as we move forward with like development regulations, we might look into possible updates to that code section.
Yeah, for sure. I know we're interested in that conversation, but that brings me to my last and funnest question, and that is why do we still have a town center transition zone on the map? I guess I'm, yeah, there's the why question, and then there's the.
Are you referring to Town Center Reserve?
Yeah, or Town Center Reserve, not transition. I think it might have been called transition once upon a time, showing my age oddly. And I'm just wondering, like, do we think, you know, versus any of these other shades of purple, you know, like what, what's the, what's the why there? Because it's, these are sort of sometimes one lot swaths that, you know, I'm really interested in infill development and smaller scale development and making sure that that can work. But given the history of this, the history and politics of this particular designation, I'm curious as to why it remains part of this plan as we're really doing a lot of other work on the on the map. And especially, I think it behooves us to think about, you know, that that zone of 56 where we have had interested property owners and business owners who want to do more, you know, while maintaining their business, their current businesses to invest in that zone particularly, but have run into some dynamics where that basically hasn't been allowed. And this is ancient history at this point, but there are some anecdotes there that really, I think, drive sort of my question here. So I'll stop there, and I'm interested in hearing your response.
You mentioned transitional. We did have, I failed to mention, we did have an RST, which is residential transitional zone, which just adjacent to town center boundary on that orange is now a residential three. So we did remove that RST, which was specific to town home development. In terms of town center reserve, so first, we did actually extend some of that town center reserve just west of 56th Avenue West. So just two lots in on this stretch here. And then town center reserve used to extend all the way down to the 205th street boundary, King County line. We actually changed that land use designation to neighborhood mixed use. So some of that boundary got changed. I think we did want to sort of keep to what the intent of the town center plan was and how it was adopted and not really change too much with this process. I don't know if Christie or Mandy, if you have another explanation, but yeah, I think we just wanted to sort of keep the original intent and not change too much of the town
I would just add that there is a planned action associated with town center and the boundary of town center. So that's one of the reasons why we didn't want to change the boundary per se. And then we're also looking to kind of create transitional form adjacent to that area. You can see that we kind of want town center to stand out as the most intensive area. So that's what I would add. I don't know if Christie wants to add other thoughts.
Yeah, I think that's spot on. I think we extended some of that neighborhood mixed use, so trying to make sure that we're transitioning areas of more intensity and then in areas around where we have good transportation corridors. And we did extend a little bit of that reserve area. We're really bumping up against upzoning everything, if you will, because of capital facilities constraints. So it's where do you want to put things and densities that are most valuable? And so that was some of the thinking behind where the densities ended up being placed.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate all those explanations. And I do see that it's not not quite, or it has been shifted in a logical way. And I lied, I've got one last little question here about the gateway mixed use zone, which isn't the getaway mixed use zone. But the, there's a, you know, the note on the bottom says it's, you know, currently allows for up to 20 stories, you know, and, you know, given that this is effective down zone, do we foresee any, any lost opportunity there? I realize, again, that the comments that you've been driving home, that we are trying to drive the focus to town center and understand that. And also, there's some large lots there with sort of aging, or business park areas that would probably be ripe for redevelopment and given proximity to light rail and those two freeway interchanges or on ramps. Just wondering if there's any other thoughts about, you know, lost opportunity there, et cetera.
Yeah, good question. You're exactly right. We did want to leverage town center as being the area where we're going to see the most growth and higher intensities. I think with the history of the Freeway Tourist District, we were not seeing that sort of height proposed. And it felt, I guess, kind of not best practice to have that land use designation allow for that much height when town center, the max height is 12 stories. So we brought the max height and the gateway mixed use to 12 to match what's allowed currently in town center. Yeah.
Okay, I guess.
Jonathan, I think there's something to add here, too. I mean, frankly, it doesn't matter. You can, you can say up to 20 stories, and I think it's our belief that we're never going to get something that's probably 20 stories, but we could definitely do that. It was, it's more about. It was, it's more about when Freeway Taurus was created, that zone, the intent was that, you know, the traveling public would get off I-5 and, you know, stop and have a bite to eat, go to the gas station, you know, get a Pepsi and, and do those things. And as we've seen, that's developed a little bit different than I think what was originally proposed in that area. So also, the zoning currently has a bunch of different districts. And so as we tried to do in Town Center is to say, hey, let's simplify, simplify these zones. So when the development community comes in, it's easier to understand. When staff is implementing zoning, it's easier to implement. And really, let's get this zoning in a place that makes sense to what we do have today, which is open up opportunities for the types of development that are gonna develop next to the light rail. So I think it, it doesn't really matter. You know, a lot of zoning codes don't even have height restrictions on them. And so, I mean, that's something that we can talk about further down the road, but I think realistically, we're never gonna see anything above 12, and we may never see 12. It doesn't mean that, you know, we can't shoot for those. But I, for us, it was more about, let's take a look at this with a fresh set of eyes as to how this area is gonna develop next to the light rail station.
And, and I would also just add, this is Mandy Roberts with OTAC, that, you know, we're mindful of the cost of construction and steel frame construction, which really, you know, as you look around the region, the predominant construction form being built is podium construction of, you know, seven, eight stories maximum, which is wood frame construction over concrete podium. When you get into steel frame above, above that height, it, the costs are exorbitant. And what we hear from talking with developers is, you know, unless you, unless you get up to 20 stories or above, it's really hard to make steel frame projects really financially viable. So, so that's why we're just trying to kind of right-size this to what potentially, you know, what, what the real market potential is as well.
Great, thank you. You both read my mind, and I appreciate all that, that nuance and explanation. So, thank you, Mayor. That's, that's it for me for now.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Sonmore, you had your hand up.
Yes, this is, I've been through this a couple times, and so I have to ask, is there anybody on 44th that owned, that we know owns any of that property? Because across 44th, I see where some of the purple goes across the street, and I've seen it done before where we have people come in and they actually own that property. And because that looks like a very weird spacing across and the purple where it says 44th Avenue, what was the intention there? Why are we moving it across the street? Oh, way over to the right, and there you go, right there.
Are you talking about here?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, so this is currently what is Sorelli's Pizza, and it's currently zoned, I believe, community business.
Wait, what about why across the street? The reason I ask is we've had on the books since, for 14 years to upgrade 44th, and we never have, and it's going to be getting busier and busier. And then over by QFC on 228th, I shop at that grocery store, and for me to get on 228th off of 42nd, it's difficult. And we've talked about that for years. Our infrastructure, if you look at those dark blue maps, that's our infrastructure. That's why we were looking at 57th and heading into people's homes least amount of permanent issues. And we're talking now like just nothing. Let's, let's just take this area and blow it up. And let's just take this, we're talking about people's homes here, so when they come in and scream, you'll, you'll, you'll feel the wrath of what we've felt in the past. And I think we have to be very conscientious of how we talk about neighborhoods right now. These are our neighbors that live in these neighborhoods, and when we just say, oh, we need more growth here and here, we don't even have the infrastructure to carry that. We can't even accommodate that. And so I know we have to put something together, but I just wanna caution people when they just talk about neighborhoods like they're, like they're nothing and that we need more opportunities there. These are people's homes, and you do scare people when you say you're gonna bring neighborhoods in, into their areas, because this is what they know and this is what they want. And we keep on planning for all these people that we don't even know or who are coming in. So I just would hesitate when we're talking about it, just to have a little bit more compassion for your neighbors that currently live here, because they, I can tell you, most of them do not have any idea what's going on with the COM Plan or that matter is. I was talking to a friend, and she said she was getting ready to go to City Hall to fight something, because they put up a sign about some area in her property, by her property in Snohomish. And I said, well, there's sign up, it's probably too late. She goes, oh, no, that's a sign that we can come in. And I just think that it's very prudent of us to think about our neighbors and not think about making a profit all the time or being loyal to whoever you're loyal to, is just really thinking about what we're changing here, because you are gonna be changing our city into something you probably don't want if we build this out. So I'm just saying that because I, I think that's fair, and that's what I've learned in the years of being on council, is these are people's homes. You just don't say, I'm just going to, you know, need more here or need more here. You also have to think people are not going to be all using the light rail, and I don't know how you're gonna get all that density on 44th and 228th, and you look over at the other areas, how they're even gonna get into our downtown. So maybe it's good that we have it like this.
Okay, Mayor for Tim Wall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have some follow-up questions. Actually, I wanted a little, to clarify something that, in thinking back to our last conversation about the 1,800 units, I wanted to better understand what I, what maybe I, maybe, anyway, okay. So there's two different possibilities of where that could be. And what you were saying is we're 1,800 units short, and so I wanted to clarify, is that before, that's, that's our current comprehensive plan, correct?
Yes.
And is, is short 1,800 units? And so this, the draft that we're considering makes up that gap. So, so we will then, we're, so we're gonna add 1,800 units in that map, land use map? Okay, so that leads to my next couple of questions. Thank you for that clarification. That helps me understand better the difference between that or are we still 1,800 short, is what I was partially concerned that you were saying. So that, that makes, that, that's reassuring. Okay, so now, looking at the 1,800 units and looking at the neighborhood mixed-use zones, I really like the idea. To me, what we're doing is actually preserving the current quality of life that each of us know in 70%, 80% of the, of the city, right? And we're concentrating the expected additional growth we have to make up, the 1,800 units, in these neighborhood mixed-use zones. And I understand what Councilmember Sonmore is cautioning us on, and it's fair, because those people that are in those, those zones may or may not like that additional growth. And I would consider it an opportunity, because we're providing them the opportunity to create more housing units, more retail activity, more mixed-use, more office space in those areas, but it's up to them, right? It's their choice whether they want to change their, or sell their property at a higher price, by the way, to, and make a profit, or to stay as it is and just leave their property the way it is for eternity until they decide to sell. So it's, it's, it's important for us to A, be able to comply with state law, which requires us to accommodate the additional units, but B, finding a way to do that in a way that preserves the quality of life that we know in most of the city, while concentrating additional opportunities in the neighborhood mixed-use zones. So, but that said, I understand Councilmember Sonmore's point, which is that, you know, they, most people that are in those areas may not know what that all means. And so it's a matter of trying to help them understand and walk them through the process and realize what it is, and they still may not like it, and that's okay. It is, it's a challenge that that's, we have to make hard decisions. But I think this is the best path forward in concentrating that growth in certain areas, which allows us to preserve the single-family neighborhoods throughout 70% of the city. That said, I am interested in, so we have the residential one and two, which I'm assuming is our current RS 8,400 and 7,200, and then I'm, I'm interested in what is the one, two, three, and four? What are the different zones therefore that we're looking at? And perhaps what would be helpful for us is to have some charts just indicating, you know, like TC1, just remind us that, you know, TC1 is eight to 12 stories. TC2 is six to eight stories, or three, et cetera. And then same with RS, well, residential one, two, three, and four, that is, that'd be 8,400, 7,200, 4,800, or are we changing that, by the way, which is something we haven't, need to have a conversation with, which is maybe old, and the same thing with the transition and reserve area, that's, we've been having that conversation for a very long time, but it is not over, because we need to, we need to revisit that and what those are. But I'm curious what the, what you're, in, what, what's being presented to us, what is RS, or what is the residential three and four? And then also, so what would be, I think, helpful is, okay, we have to have 1,800 additional units, and we've identified these neighborhood business mixed-use zones. How much, how much of that 1,800 is going into each of those different areas? And, and then we talked last time about 5% is ADUs, so how many units are we hoping to make up with the ADUs that, and then 10, 20, 20%? How much, so just a couple of different charts to be able to help really, for those of us that visualize through numbers, I guess, through charts, would help us to understand where that growth is going, how we're accommodating that growth, et cetera. And I think that's it for now, yes.
Okay. So first, we did provide this land use designation worksheet. Is your recommendation to convert this into like a table, sort of showing what the allowed uses would be in the density?
Yeah.
We could put that in a chart format for the next meeting?
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
Okay. So residential one through four, so currently, we base it on the minimum lot size. So RS 4,800, for example, would be a minimum lot size of 4,800. We're changing that with, with this in that it's now based on unit density to accommodate those middle housing types that we are incorporating. So residential one will allow for a unit density of up to two units or duplex. Residential two would allow up to four units per lot density or fourplex. Residential three is designed to allow for all of the typologies of middle housing, so duplex, fourplex, sixplex, up to courtyard apartments, cottage housing, for example. And then residential four, sort of like a hybrid between middle housing types and multifamily traditional apartment buildings. So that would have a max allowed height of three stories for the middle housing, and then up to four stories for multifamily in those zones. Sorry, there's another part to your question.
Yeah, just, sorry, other way. Yeah, I think, and you're right, yeah, I think putting that in chart form, that's kind of what some of us have been used to seeing over the years, is just having a chart form indicating, you know, the different zones and the stories and the densities, et cetera, would be helpful. And then the other part of that, another chart or, or map, or however you wanna do it, but is indicating where, where we're putting those 1,800 units. So based on our, you know, again, neighborhood mixed-use zones in each of those areas is gonna make up for, you know, 400 units we're expecting to see in the Melody Hill, and, you know, 300 units over here, and then 400. So where, where, and then, and then, so that's gonna make up X amount, and then we're, you know, 5%, we're expecting to be ADUs, which would be spread throughout the city and various areas. Same thing with the, so then kind of looking at the residential three and four and kind of the, the middle housing, you know, how much, how, just getting, putting some, the numbers of 1,800 and breaking it down to where it's going and how we're gonna be, how we're meeting that.
Okay. So I believe, I don't know if it was the last meeting or a previous meeting, we did present our draft EIS analysis, which showed that deficit of 1,815 units with the existing zone capacity, with alternative two, which is our preferred alternative. We were showing that we would, so, let's back up. The deficit is really in that, I think it's 60 to 80% of the area median income, which according to Commerce, the complementary housing type that would accommodate that is middle housing. So a majority of those units that we are in a deficit of is middle housing. So the residential one through four land use designations would accommodate that. And then we are also in a deficit of 120% of area median income and up, which to Commerce is single-family type development, which we don't need to demonstrate capacity for in this process, or in the COM Plan process.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, so that top circle on the right, how many units are we projecting there? Again, it may or may not happen, depending on a number of different factors, but that's, that's what, where the land capacity that we are increasing to allow for the potential number of units in each of those different circles, right?
Yeah, we can, we can make that for you.
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Jonathan. Appreciate the presentation and all of the continued work, and just particularly around engagement, I guess I wanna go back to, like, yes, I think that there are plenty of folks in our community who are not plugged in and, you know, who at some point will, will hopefully find out about this. But I, but I will say, I know that we have done a more intentional job than we have done in the past. We have reached folks who have never been involved in those processes and appreciate the opportunity to chat with them at the open house that we did here at Brighton and just all of the other community engagement events that you've done throughout this process to try to ensure that as many people in our community as possible both knew that we were going through this process, as well as had the opportunity to share their feedback. Thank you to all of our community members who participated in those processes, who sent us written communication, appreciated the opportunity to read through all of it. I will name to make sure that it is clear to our community, there are folks across the spectrum, there are folks who do not want to see change in additional development, and there are plenty of folks who would like to see additional development, members of this community, who live in this community, many of whom have lived here for a very long time. You know, and I think particularly, one of the things I appreciate about the map that we're seeing is a lot of the develop, we've, development we've seen thus far in terms of multifamily and increased density has been rental. And we found out recently that we're now over half of our community, you know, rents versus owns. And I will just name the impact of being able to buy a house in Mount Lake Terrace. I mean, absolutely changed the trajectory of my life had I not put down roots here when I did and bought when I did, because candidly, had I not, I wouldn't have been able to, you know, in the very short future after that, you know? But that makes a difference. It makes a difference in people's lives, you know, and it's not, homeownership is not for everybody. We need diversity in housing options. But for those who do wanna stay here, I love that there is at least the opportunity in this map for more types of housing options that will allow homeownership, at least, maybe not affordable, we can talk about what affordable means, but at more affordable cost points than, than what currently exists with our current zoning structure. So I will just say, I appreciate, you know, again, I think, you know, there are folks across the spectrum, and I appreciate all of the hard work, particularly from Christie and from you, Jonathan, and from the Planning Commission, to get to a place where, you know, this feels like it has tried to honor and hear all of the, the input that we have gotten and find a solution that, that tries to meet in the middle and gives us an option to move forward with, that, that tries, you know, to, to bring all of those, those perspectives together and move us forward. So I don't have a, my only other, feels like a very silly comment, but I will say that the colors for the Town Center section, so like the residential section, they're like... like, they're like, the shades go in the direction of kind of the changes in, you know, kind of the, the density. Whereas for Town Center, we go from like purple to pink, back to purple to pink. Like, I would love, I think it would be easier to read if that was maybe more, like, if they went, if we changed like Town Center two and three colors, for instance, I think that would probably just make it a little bit more clear that, right? I was like, this is so outside of my, like, I have not, like, graphic design and color and all of those things. But I will just tell you, as I was like trying to reconcile the key with the map, like, I kept getting a little, I was, it kept throwing me off a little bit that, you know, Town Center two is, you know, further away in color from Town Center one than Town Center three was. And so I guess that would be my only, maybe, you know, input here is that that might be helpful to take a look at. But other than that, big thank you for, for all of the work to get here and, yeah, just big thank you.
Thank you.
All right, are there any other hands going up? All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you all, yeah, for your comments. They're well received. Also, just wanted to back up and say that residential one through four, we are not, what's the word, prohibiting new single-family development. It's still going to be an allowed use in those areas. So anyone with an existing single-family home that wants to do in addition on their property, that's still a possibility. So we wanted to be intentional in that. We are not doing away with single-family. We're just accommodating these middle housing types for our city as required by HB 1110. All right, so just a recap of the public review process. So we have finished our time with the Planning Commission, at least for now. So September 23rd, they forward a recommendation to council. Our next council meeting on October 3rd, we will continue discussion on the land use map. If there's any other feedback or recommendations that you have for staff, we can discuss it then. We will also bring forward the recommended draft comp plan as recommended by the Planning Commission, as well as memorandum, staff memo that details some of the updates that we are going to incorporate into the final plan. And then at the next meeting, we will gauge whether we will need that October 10th meeting. Otherwise, we will allow council some time to read through the document and bring back any comments at the public hearing date of October 16th.
Mayor Protem Wall?
Just real quick while we're on the timeline and review process, I appreciate the opportunity to be able to submit some, share some comments and ideas and appreciate your consideration. I also am looking forward to the performance measures and seeing what we put forward with performance measures. But I'm just curious about timing for when we're going to, when you're going to be able to incorporate those comments. We'll talk about the transportation element in a minute here with some potential solutions for addressing the 57th Street. We'll get to that in a minute. But, but just as far as timing, that we're going to be able to get that back for us to be able to review and when we're going to be able to comment on the edits.
Yeah, so the goal would be to get you that document by your meeting, meeting on the 10th, if council wants to take advantage of that. It's marked as tentative right now. All comments ought to be incorporated by your consideration at the public hearing on the 16th. But you'll get it, but you'll have it the week prior to that meeting date. So we try to publish the information a week prior to that meeting date and make sure you get those, you can read it, look at it, think about it before we get to the public hearing. So that if you have any additional input for us, you can provide it to us at that public hearing and then we can incorporate that into the final draft.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, and I appreciate that. I guess as soon as possible, and I guess I would suggest at least a couple of days before the 10th, before our meeting on the 10th, so that we, if we do have additional comments, we have the opportunity to share those comments on the 10th, so that you're not, so you're not left scrambling to put things together, you know, final edits before the public hearing, which we would hope goes smoothly rather than having a lot of, just provide us the opportunity and the, and the public that does want to comment on any changes, the opportunity to make sure that we are addressing that by the 10th, so that we have hopefully a clean document that everybody can be as supportive as possible.
Yeah, so the, the deadline for submissions for the things that we send to council is typically a week prior to the meeting. So the reason I don't say the day, I don't want to confuse people. So your deadline for the 10th meeting is October 3rd. But that's also the same as your previous meeting, right? So trying to keep all those things straight, not confuse everybody about the dates. But typically you will get that stuff, minimum of five days, but more usually a week before the published date that you see on the schedule.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, that we have the opportunity to review it before the 10th. So that sounds, you know, if you have the third or the fifth for us to be able to start taking a look at by the 10th, beautiful, thank you.
All right, anyone else? Okay.
Okay, so touching based on the land use element, so in our narrative in the element chapter, we, so these are based on Planning Commission comments and recommendations. So discuss the 2044 allocated growth targets and current capacity shortfall. So we do have in the narrative section, that first part of that element chapter, we go into that. We have a separate sub-areas subsection. So we discuss all six sub-areas within the city as well as share the key priorities and feedback recommendations that we heard on the Melody Hill and Cascade View sub-areas. We go into discussion on the primary centers in the city, so those commercial centers or nodes and neighborhood nodes. So as you recall, that's where we're seeing that neighborhood mixed-use land use. In terms of implementation strategies, there was a suggestion to explore the adoption of form-based code, adopt and implement suburb plans and center and corridors plans, create and implement a parking management plan for Town Center, and create a citywide approach strategy for public engagement citywide. For goals and policies, there was a suggestion to identify funding mechanisms for public open spaces, civic plazas specifically for community use, encourage and incentivize private developers to provide open space, concerns about scale, and scope of frontyard gardens for food growth, a desire to see light and noise pollution addressed more imperatively, suggestion to be proactive with the development of new connections to existing or planned destination centers. And then again on parking, just being considerate of parking code updates in Town Center to ensure that there isn't a, an impact on existing on-street parking in residential areas. So I think that comment is more so related to the light rail station. For recreation parks and open space, there was, so we provide an inventory of existing parks and classifications, and we point to the existing functional plan, which is the Recreation Parks and Open Space Master Plan for detailed plans. So I think it's important to leverage that body of work and incorporate it and adopt it by reference in a comprehensive plan. For implementation strategies, there was interest in implementing a wayfinding system for parks and identifying areas to enhance existing parks. And then just a general comment on some of the verbiage we've, we've used in policy. So request to use safe rather than safer when discussing pedestrian bicycle routes. And I would say the latter word, safer, was just a recommendation from our city engineer. I think it's just best practice that's used in transportation planning. And then on transportation, in the narrative, we provide a discussion on level of service, including multimodal level of service, so that's walking, biking, other forms of active transportation. We provide future transportation network assumptions and travel demand forecasting. For implementation strategies, there's interest in finding new funding opportunities, being more proactive and creative with those, providing options for travel demand management strategies. Again, this comment on safer, so safer. And then desire to see a bike head advisory board established specifically for the future active transportation plan, that I believe is also a council goal. And capital facilities, so.
Okay, we have a question here.
Thank you, actually more than a, more of a comment, but thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, just following up on the transportation element, we did have a great discussion, I thought, with the business community, Chamber of Commerce and, and some of the affected businesses on, around 57th. And I think we've identified a solution that we will incorporate, we'll get some language on a change to the goals and policy to ensure that we are addressing their concerns. So we'll get that incorporated in the transportation element. And when, when, it sounds like on the, October 3rd or 5th, or something along those lines, we'll have, we'll have some language to share with everybody to make sure that we're addressing, so we have that timeline we're concerned about and, and get that incorporated in the plan for next steps. So I think we've found a, I believe, a great solution and we're going to be able to address those concerns, be able to move forward with everything and feel comfortable, everybody feel comfortable with where we're at. I, I believe, I hope. So we are, so hopefully we're going to be able to all sing by, on, what is it, December 16th? October 16th. Right. By, by December 16th, we are, we definitely should be singing together and celebrating, getting ready for the new year. Anyway, so, but I, I just wanted to comment there that there will be some additional changes addressing those, those challenges that we're, we're facing.
Absolutely.
Looking good there, thank you.
All right, so lastly, capital facilities, just in the narrative, we provide a summary of the existing capital facilities. So these are those facilities that are owned or operated by the city or by inter-local agreement. And then notes importance of establishing level of service for the various types of capital facilities. Implementation strategies, establish level of service for all capital facilities, conduct regular rate studies for water bill rates, implement a disaster preparedness plan, and complete and updated inventory of ADA deficiencies for city-owned facilities. And then there was a question on the city meeting level of service with the projected growth and how we would accommodate that additional capacity. Any questions?
Okay, anyone? I don't see any hands going up. Okay.
So lastly, just a summary. October 3rd, we will have that continued discussion. We'll have that memo prepared, which details what the updates are going to be and also ensure that before the 10th, we have that, those recommendations reflected. So yeah, project staff, what's on our plate, incorporate recommendations from the Planning Commission and council into the final plan. Incorporate Commerce and Puget Sound Regional Council comments, as well as the other agencies that provide comments. Incorporate edits from the city staff. And then continue to finalize our final EIS, as that will be adopted with the comprehensive plan. That's it.
Okay.
That's it.
Did you want to go another hour? All right, well, I don't see any hands going up. So.
I'll ask one.
Oh, go ahead, Councilmember.
Can we find out how many hours we have spent on the comp plan just between the work session and a council meeting in the last year?
Do you, are you curious about staff or are you curious about council?
Well, you, no, just council. You mentioned that we could go another hour and we used to go many, many hours. So I was just curious in the last month or so, how, how much time we've actually put into the comp plan? And I'm sorry, Mandy's got her mouth, she looks like she's scared. I'm, I'm just curious, in the last two months, how much time has the council put into the comp plan?
Is that during meetings or outside of meetings?
I don't, have we been getting briefed outside? No, that would be not going to any advance, it would just be during a council.
All right. And that's just for the past month. Councilmember Witterd.
Thank you, Mayor. Oh, if it's just the past month, then never mind. I was going to say, if it was for longer, I was going to ask that my hours for the CPAG liaison be added.
Okay, Councilmember Summer, did you have more?
I just, I didn't know what Steve meant. He has a CPAC?
Sorry, I'm talking about the, the advisory group, my time on that. I was being educated, so if you're going to count the council hours, I was going to say count those hours as well. But if it's only the last month, we stopped meeting a while ago.
No, I, I don't really have a sinister plan. All I was saying is, you know, I just want to make sure that we've covered everything in the comp plan that we need to cover. And Steve, we weren't educated like you were in that. And so all I'm saying is sometimes we spend a lot of time on other things and sometimes we maybe should spend more time on the comp plan since it is so important. But if we, if we're good on not asking any more questions, I really don't need to know. It was just kind of off the cuff comment because I heard, you know, we could go another hour and I just thought, you know, this is something that we're doing for our citizens that are going to affect their rest of their lives. And if we do need that other hour, then let's do it. But if we've answered all those questions, then I'm fine with that.
Okay. I don't see anyone else. So. Well, I guess we're done for tonight on this one.
Thank you all.
Good for now.
Thank you. There will be more. Thank you, Jonathan.
You're rock star too, by the way.
Okay, so we can move on to the public comment. Do we have any, anybody signed up? Kirk, Ishizaki, you'll have five minutes at the podium.
Good evening. My public comments are on record from the September 23rd Planning Commission meeting. I yield my remaining time of four minutes and 45 seconds to Erin Ishizaki, in case she needs more time. Thank you.
Next is Erin Ishizaki, and you will have five minutes.
Thanks. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Protem and councilmembers. My name's Erin Ishizaki, I'm part of the West Plaza Marketplace Ownership Group. Kirk, I don't think I need the extra time, but thank you. First, I just wanted to say thank you to everyone to council for your robust discussion at last week's meeting regarding the history of the Town Center Plan, which was really helpful to learn about, all your efforts, as well as the importance of keeping existing local and beloved community businesses here in Mount Lake Terrace, businesses like Double D Meats and Diamond Knot that are at West Plaza. are at West Plaza. I also appreciated your comments that the city does not intend to engineer, fund, and build the 57th Street extension from 232nd to 236th as a city project, because we know that would require the city to take and demolish the entire West Plaza building to make that planned connection, and the city's Main Street Phase Three project a reality, and we know that that would cost a lot of public money to do so, probably more than $42 million. Wanted to say thank you so much, we appreciate the amendment to the Economic Development Plan that you all worked on last week, to note that the relationship between economic development and transportation improvements should be further studied and reviewed with possible updates to the Town Center Plan. And we understand, and found it interesting, that the 57th extension isn't really needed to alleviate traffic congestion, it appears, but there's no traffic studies that show that documented need for this from a transportation standpoint, is our understanding, and that it's more part of the city's economic development long-range vision. Interesting to see the comments noted on the comp plan summary we just heard, and amazing work, everybody, that's a lot, a huge body of work, so great job. I, I thought it was interesting, one of the comments in the land use element was something like that the city should be more proactive to make connections to promote growth and development. And I would probably say, we would disagree with that comment if it results in displacement of existing businesses and homes, that we don't believe the city's role is to be proactive about building street connections when it means displacing existed, existing business members and community members, and I think that, you know, I don't believe that's your intent. So I just wanted to quickly chime in this evening a bit, to speak about the topic of anti-displacement. And, you know, as we've heard pretty clearly in past conversations, the city doesn't intend to do that, the city doesn't intend to displace local businesses to build a new street. But as you know, the power of eminent domain for street and infrastructure improvements is very strong for cities in Washington State, so if the city did get funding to build that extension, there's pretty clear powers that they could take the property if they needed, which would be an example of direct displacement from a transportation project. As Councilmember Wall just mentioned earlier this evening, there's an opportunity to include some more explicit anti-displacement policies in your comprehensive plan update that you're working on, and we would encourage you to consider adding some anti-displacement policies, perhaps in the transportation, capital facilities, or even the economic development elements, which would be a concrete way that the city council could codify your expressed intent regarding the 57th extension, that would only happen if and when. And this would also help the city, of course, meet the requirements from House Bill 1220, which require all cities to include anti-displacement measures in their comprehensive plan updates. So thank you again, everyone, so much, as always, for your consideration and all of your efforts. We're pleased to be a part of this community process, and want to thank you for your service to the community. Thank you.
All right, do we have anyone else?
No one else has signed up, and there were no written comments this week.
All right, thank you. Okay, let's move on to the review and approval of the October 3rd meeting agenda. Is everyone taking a look at it? Okay, well, then we'll, we'll go on to.
When will it be posted? Sorry, I couldn't get any of the links, so I think it's today they'll get posted. You guys just said something about a week before.
Are you talking about the agenda?
Yeah.
It's on, yeah, it's on.
All the links work? Maybe I just didn't upgrade it enough, I couldn't get my links to work. So the, the budget information's already been released?
The agenda is up, the materials are not. They will be either tomorrow or very first thing on Monday. That was the five to seven days I was talking about earlier.
Okay. All right, then, then we'll move on to council comments. And does anyone have any? Okay, well, I, I have a question on the October 17th meeting, we were, we're going to, we're going to a Snohomish County Cities that night, we are going to go to that, and so that we're gonna have it on the 7th, on the 16th, which is Wednesday.
Correct, a special meeting on Wednesday, October 16th, and then the Snohomish County Cities Dinner on the 17th. In earlier instances where this had happened, where we had Snohomish County Cities Dinner, we just canceled the meeting for that week, with all the work upcoming for comp plan and everything else, we felt the need to schedule a special meeting on the 16th.
Yeah, we used to do that. Councilmember Murray, and then Payne Donovan.
Thank you, Mayor. What's the plan for the DEIC meeting, which is normally that night at 7:00?
On the 16th. So we will take a look at that, and see what's on the agenda for both, both meetings.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Yeah, my question is, I think I, in that initial notice or maybe the calendar item on the, on, in my outlook, I think it was a early start time.
On the 16th.
Yeah, or is it 7:00, or are we expecting it to be 7:00?
At this moment, we may have considered something that I'm not recalling at the moment, but I will, I will get the exact details and make sure, and share those all with council.
Yeah, whatever it is, it'll be there, but just wanted to triple-check that. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. Selfishly, just wanted to say, for anyone who is attending tomorrow morning's breakfast, thank you in advance, and I hope to see you there, and if not, no worries, just appreciate the support.
All right, thank you. I, I just wanted to just mention that light rail is wonderful. Oh my gosh, and I'm gonna keep, as, as often as I can, I'm just gonna just keep repeating it, because, and I, I'm hearing all my friends going to the Mount Lake Terrace Station to go to the airport and so forth, so I, I've been to so many things where I didn't have to worry about parking. So I just wanted to just mention that, and then anyone else before we adjourn? Go ahead.
And we put on the best party.
We did.
That's the word out there, we had the best party.
Night market.
That's right. In fact, there's discussion about wanting to do it every year now.
We can have salmon in the water?
Oh, no. Oh, boy. Okay, everyone else? No one else? All right, we are adjourned.